Evening, Deputy Chief. Glad you're here. We will officially convene this regularly scheduled City Council meeting, the first of 2017 at 6:02 PM. And 2017, and it's officially called to order.
January 12.
What did I say?
Did you say January 12? Oh, he did. Sorry, I didn't catch it. You said the date on the card.
Okay. I'm off to a better start. Okay, let's now engage in our roll call.
Andy Wilson.
He's had the plo, he's been in the hospital, and is asked to be excused.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Joe Scheid.
He's cold and he's en route from Winlock. He's got stuck in the snow. And so, apparently he's parked and now is working his way out of it. So, he hopes he'll be here shortly.
Mike Parkin.
Here.
Ruth Creer, present. And Mayor Smith.
Also present. Okay, well, fortuitously, we do have a forum, so we can proceed with our pledge. And, Jason, would you please...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the mayor's report would begin with an update on wastewater facility plan progress. I can report that I've been working with Joe and with officials of Civil West. And we've been working... Thank you. As I think you're probably all aware, we have been trying to establish relationships with property owners in the vicinity of Vader that might be willing to let us use a land application of our waste treatment during the summer months. The official with Civil West contacted a warehouse with that possibility and was not met with open arms. There was a certain environmental reluctance of the product they're trying to produce and the easement of constraints that would be a challenge. So, I then talked... We got a letter from Civil West explaining what they'd learned and inviting me to see if I could reach out and maybe even consider an option of us purchasing the land. So, I contacted that warehouse official, and that was met with a different response. They said they were willing to consider that option, but they'd need information.
The purchase option?
The purchase option.
Okay.
But they want to know how much land, where it would be at, and such and such. So, the Civil West employee is last... It was probably Tuesday, I suspect, or this past week, two days ago, has made contact with them, with that package. Obviously, there's no price, or to be something we'd have to negotiate, but we're floating that as a trial balloon. And it would be melded into whatever eventual cost of the project.
Property across the creek?
Yeah. Not towards Enchanted Valley, but under the railroad and then up in the small section along the hillside.
Southwest.
How much land are we required to use?
Well, that's not entirely certain either. It depends on the inflow and outflow and production totals and such. So, there's a lot of unknowns in it. But I would speculate at least three and maybe four acres, maybe even five. Did you get any feedback?
I was thinking it was like tied to 20 acres is what I had in my mind.
Oh, I thought it was not 20. I had heard 20, but whoo. But here again, I'm speculating.
Again, that was just a range and not before anything had been determined. So, one or more when they come.
Right. But that's... They've established... Civil West has contacted some property owners here, and they're... I don't think they've actually met yet, but they're getting close to it. So... And they were going to give us a report at our next council meeting on the 26th, but apparently, we've learned today that they're not feeling quite comfortable that they're going to have the information they want to present to the council by that date, so they're asking it to be backed up to the first council meeting in February. And I don't think that's a problem itself, as far as our time calendar goes. So, that's the essence of what... Where we're at. Anything that you'd add? Okay. Our second item involves a park board meeting Saturday at 10:00 AM. The park board will be meeting, the first one of the 2017 meeting. Is that Joe?
No.
Okay. I would like to add as well that I think the council should be aware that we had a meeting yesterday with Brandon Melton and Les Townsend, our city inspector, engineer person.
Building official.
Building official.
There you go.
What a title. And who's a good man, by the way. He's very competent, and we're lucky to have him because he's pretty no-nonsense. But it was a... I would... And Joe was present as well. I would characterize it as a very, very productive meeting. And we are crossing or clearing nearly every hurdle and getting him ever closer to being able to get water on that property. And the instant he gets water, it's the instant he will be able to begin to get his business relocated down here. And I think Brandon was pleased with the outcome of the meeting and the cooperation that he's getting from the city. So, stay tuned with regard to that. I won't get into specifics here, but I think I'm very optimistic that sometime in the next two to three months, we may be seeing ribbon cutting in some sort of way. Did I capture the essence of that meeting? And the last thing is that I hope you noted in the Town Prior, the front page article about the emergency preparedness community meeting that we've been talking about for the past several months with Dossie Wilson. And we're getting the word out, it'll be in next week's newspaper, and I anticipate that... I talked to Mrs. Wilson earlier this afternoon. She's all set and ready to go. And I'm hoping that we get some residents here, that we might get some response. All of you are invited to be here, of course. It'll be next Thursday, the 19th, at 7:00, right here. I'm hoping that we have a video of the Cascadia Fault event, some of the early warnings and advice relating to that potential disaster, which would have a direct impact to Northern California, Oregon, Washington, and Southern British Columbia, if and when it strikes. But you're aware of that. That's all I've got for the mayor's report. So, let's proceed with council reports. Anything from council members?
I had a resident come and ask during the winter time while we have the water off at Warden Park for the bathrooms, if we could move a porta potty up in that location for the kids that do use the thing during the day, or the families that do come in during the day. And I thought that the lower porta potty down at the park, at the other park, it needs to be removed, usually during the winter time anyway, for flooding purposes, I believe. So, I didn't know if that would have been just a perfect fit to move it when we closed the park at the end of the summer, to move it up there.
Do those need to be winterized, those porta potties?
I don't think so.
Are they good for all year round use?
I think the only thing you'd have to do to winterize them would be to dump a little antifreeze in them or something.
We have the company that comes, they pump two of them and take them way down, almost no liquid in the bottom for the two of them that we closed. Because the park is closed, we don't get that much activity. We keep the one open at the Murphy Park for walking use. But there's two of them that are locked and not used during the winter months. I don't know what it would take for me to move them, but...
They're just bolted down to the slab. I put them in there. So, I mean, the lower one, it would be just as easy to pump all this fluid out of it and move it onto a trailer and move it up there, really. But it's just a matter of putting it, having a spot to put it up here.
It works as well, there's generally a way.
Would it be better to just have the water off?
They're worried about the pipes busting.
Yeah, the problem is we have regional pipe problems at that location.
Yeah. It was first installed, it was a regular winter, but we could look into it and see what it would take. We'd want to position it so that anticipating that there would be some efforts to tip it over and such, which is pretty dangerous.
Yeah, we probably need to pour another little pad there just to...
If we did it. Yeah. Might be... I would probably entertain such a strategy maybe next winter.
Right, right, yeah. We're kind of late in the process for now.
I wonder if it'd fit between the two doors, just right in front of it, and the slab's already there and...
There's drinking fountain right there.
Always there? That's convenient.
And it's got to be secure, it will get pushed over.
Yeah, well, I was saying, to be on a slab, then we could just have two, four holes and...
Yeah, we'll definitely research it.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any other council observations?
So, is that something that the park board should be aware of?
No, I'm going to be at the park board meeting this Saturday. I'll bring it up to their attention. Okay. With that, agenda approval for tonight. Council action on that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for 1/12/2017.
Okay. Mrs. Creer has the move to approve the agenda as written for tonight. Do we have a second?
Can we add...
Oh, wait. Well, we got the motion. We could do it after it's seconded.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parks.
I was hoping... I'm sorry, I was hoping to add, to revisit the compressed culvert in between the railroad tracks and the bridge again. We've talked about it in the past, and I think we had some action that we were going to do on it, but there has been no action done, so...
Okay, so you approved the agenda with the addition, or maybe I have a number five, the discussion on the depressed pipe by railroad tracks. See, Ruth, would you care to revise? I just stated it for you, but that's out of place on my part.
So, how would I work that then?
You revised your motion.
I'll revise my motion to include...
Yeah.
Number five?
Yes. Council discussion of depressed pipe.
Council discussion of the pipe.
By the railroad track.
By the railroad track.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second to that?
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Parks.
Tried to get it in there.
Okay. Now, I'd like to put it to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed. Okay, motion is carried. Minutes from our December 15th meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for the special city council meeting on December 15th, 2016.
Okay. And Mr. Parks has just made a motion to approve those minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're any opposed, motion is carried. Vouch for approval for the January, the dates of the year, or council action.
I'll make a motion that we approve the voucher for the beginning of January 2017 for the amount of $29,294. Oh, look at, I gave you guys a new one. There's... Sorry. Square. I don't know that you can have that one.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I missed that one. I don't have it. Anyway.
You got one, okay.
So, the beginning of January 2017 for...
Vouch for approval.
In the amount now.
In the amount of $31,093.90. December 2016 for the extended period of $18,896.22. December 2016 total, $93,004.80.
Heard the motion submitted by Mrs. Creer to approve those totals as yet. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, motion is carried. Welcome, Mr. Parks. Great call, you was able to arrive safely.
Thank you.
Well, we're at the point in our agenda to hear a special report from our chair. Deputy Chief.
I missed your last December meeting, I'm sorry, I was on vacation.
Okay. What happened?
So, the first thing I'll go over is the end of the year, December, the Decembers, what we had for Decembers. And December, we had 288 calls, or 288, excuse me, contacts. We had 22 calls, and basically, let's see here, that there was some 233 traffic stops, two infractions, and then one warrant arrest. And then, you have the list of the calls that were there. We had another couple scam deals. The assault that we had there, that was a domestic violence deal, and that was cleared by an arrest. So, that was basically the only big crime aspect that we had for the whole month of December. So, any questions on December? Now, you're going to have a lot on the year at the end, if I can explain it real well. So, the first page there, I gave you clean back to 2012 on the statistics for calls. And of course, I'm going to try and explain these statistics. There's criminal calls, then there's service calls, and so then the total. Now, 2012, you still had your chief here, and in 2013, I think you guys were partially contracted with Toledo, Winlock, and stuff like that. So, statistics are going to get... I'll try to explain it. You got dispatch that enters a call, and our way that we do it is dispatch can just randomly pick a call or whatever. So, they could enter a call and say it's an assault. And we go there, and it's not an assault, it's a dispute. Most small jurisdictions, and they basically will code it out just like what dispatch said. We don't. We take a stand that a crime has to be a crime, so it will be coded out, and then we change that nature, that whatever dispatch put in, we go... Our records division goes back and changes it so that it's correct. So, you have basically what's reported and what it actually is. So, you have two different statistics in that realm. So, I think that you'd probably see right off the bat, the biggest thing you got in 2012, you guys got 53 criminal calls compared to this, the last two years, you've had 16 and 17. So, I went back and looked at that, and that's what I found, that there's calls that I don't know that you're just coded off as that, which on us also, anytime that it's a criminal call, you have to do a report, you have to do all the statistical stuff for it and do an investigation and everything else. Most of those calls are coded off as nothing, they're just coded off as a crime with nothing. So, I can't... I would take it that, I don't know that there was paper files around here or somewhere for reports, but they didn't use Spillman at that, because there's nothing in Spillman as reports, you know, that says what it was, or says what happened with it, or anything like that. So, I couldn't tell you what those 53, whether they were true crimes or not. I can tell you the last couple of years, and that's where you get the last couple sheets. You're getting these sheets like this, that's telling you exactly what all your calls were. And it starts off by listing what the criminal calls were, and then it gives all the other calls, the service calls, what they are categorized as. So, you have one for 2016 and one for 2015. And then, for 2016, I gave you the 17 calls. So, those 17 criminal calls are listed here, exactly what they are, and then what happened with them. So, you're... You should be pretty pleased, because it's a 50% clearance ratio, which is really super high, but we'd have to take that. Your person crimes, or your crimes against persons, those are 100%, if you look at them, they're all cleared by arrest. Now, cleared by arrest to us too is that the person was referred to the prosecutor, and the prosecutor declines to file on it. But it's still cleared by arrest, because basically, we referred it to the prosecutor. So, now it's up to the prosecutor to decide whether they're going to prosecute or not. So, your property crimes, that's where it comes down. There was... I was surprised there was a couple of them that are cleared, but basically, that's where your property crimes are always low. They're low for us too, your clearance ratio, because burglars and thefts, if you don't have any suspect, and somebody reported it like two weeks later that it happened, you're pretty... We're up in the air as to how you can solve it unless something comes down the pipe. Like usually in small cities, somebody talks now, or usually it goes to the school, somebody talks, some kids talk at school, so now you go around and do that. So, that gives you all of the... And you can look at those pages if you have any questions about what the service call classifications are of that. Now, the one other thing that I'll give you, and I know, I think Chief Kimsey was going to talk to this, that you see the little parentheses that I put beside the last year here? And if you look on December's deal, you'll see the listing of crimes, and you'll see I listed it by case number, and you see that last case number there is 259, right? On the December list? But yet, you're going to say, okay, so, but I see on this other, the other printout that says everything, there's only 213. Well, remember, if you look back on some of your sheets, and I researched and looked at them, there's... If you look, I put some case numbers, and I put dispatch, question mark, question mark, question mark. Well, what has happened is that dispatch, they get in a habit of going to the GeoBase, and they pick up like 454th Street. And they don't look, because there's a 454th Street Vader, there's a 454th Street Winlock, Toledo, Centralia, Chehalis. And so, yeah, so then all of a sudden, they give that call out. So, they give that call out, and now to fix it, they delete the call. But yet, you're still getting charged with the total number of calls that you get, because it's a case number that was pulled. And so, as you see, you're 40, what, 47? 47 calls, 47 calls if they delete it out. I think it was, there was two months, I think, that I gave you this printout sheet, and I had like five or six of them that said dispatch, I didn't know. So, 2015, I pulled that up, I think it's 20. On 2015, there's 20 difference, there's a difference of 20 between the case number, the end case number, and then that total right there, 222. So, I know Chief Kimsey, I told him about it, he's the next dispatch meeting that he had with the head dispatcher deal guy. He was going to bring that up to them and say, hey, you've got to do something with this, and if you are charging Vader for those extra calls, then you need to reduce, you need to take it off, because that's not supposed to be done. So, questions? And do you need more stats? Stats or numbers, but...
Thank you.
I do have one clarification. I probably just missed your explanation. But the disposition, when you say suspended, what exactly does that mean?
Suspended means, just like I say, so you get a burglary call, and someone called in for a burglary, and we go there, and you... They don't have any, but they don't have any idea who could have done it. There's no evidence, so there'd be no fingerprints left, there's no... There's nothing there that we can process to get anything that would be evidence to do it. And so, basically, a case that you're sort of stuck at that limelight, it's still a crime, but now you have to leave it as suspended, because you can't clear it by an arrest, or you can't clear it by referring it. So, you suspend it, which means that it's open. It's an open case, and so, if anybody does come up with some, any information, then we go back and open the case back up again and start working it again. Now, the only thing that comes in after, that comes into that is the statute of limitations. So, because all crimes have a statute of limitations, so... But the thing would be that, what most people don't realize, it'd be statute of limitations on the crime, but you're still possessing stolen property. So, if we found the person with the stolen property, and yet the burglary was three years ago, they can't be charged with the burglary, but they can be charged with the fresh crime of stolen property, and the person gets their stolen property back. So, even though they can't be charged with the burglary, because the statute of limitations say... So, that's what suspended is. The only other clearance that you have is what's called exceptional clearance, and that's usually called, that usually comes about because you give it to a prosecutor, and these come into play with child sex cases, to where an exceptional clearance would be a child is unable to really be, is too... The child's too young, something happened, the child's too young, and so you wouldn't be able to prove it in court. So, the prosecutor says, yes, the crime happened, and yes, that person did it, but it's an exceptional clearance, because I can't, I can't prove it in court law, because the kid's too young to testify, and we don't have enough facts to do it. So, that would be the only other thing that comes up. But those are pretty rare, exceptional clearances are. Or you could have exceptional clearance, because now the suspect, you have a, you're working on a case, and you have, you're working to the suspect, and now all of a sudden, you find out the suspect's deceased. So, now that's an exceptional clearance, because you can't arrest a dead person, but...
Right. Since you brought up the child, the child rape here is, do we... How many pedophiles do we have in our town?
Oh, okay. So, you're...
Or registered sex offenders?
How many registered sex offenders?
Yes.
I don't know that right off the bat. I'd have to, I'd have to look it up. Yeah, it is quite a few. I want to say it's 15, 10, and 20, if I'm not mistaken. The last time that I... It changes so much, you wouldn't realize how much these people move around, especially level twos and level threes. They move continuously.
There's actually a website you can go on and...
Yeah.
...pinpoint where they live.
Yeah.
And there's that meeting?
It's a lot.
Yeah. And just remember, we check, they have to register with us. It's a felony crime if not registered. So, if any, if you ever hear of somebody that maybe moved into the area, and you heard that they've been a registered sex offender, but yet we don't know nothing about, let us know, because we can research that, and if they fail to register, because they have time limits, if they move into a new area, I think they have something like 48 hours that they have to register. And if they move, they have 48 hours to register. So, if they move from one address to the next, it could be next door. And then, level one and level threes, level threes are your most dangerous ones, and those are the ones that we post all the flyers around and notify the public, and you get them here too, don't you? And those are checked quarterly. Level twos are checked twice a year, and level ones are checked once a year. But we can randomly check anybody at any time that we want to. But that's the mandate by the state law, when you have to check them to make sure that they're at that address, that they're registered.
Would you agree that, it sounds like we've got a lot, but where numbers are not disproportionate?
No, not disproportionate to the rest of the county. The county has close to 400 registered sex offenders. So, yeah, you're... If you was to pick, I was going to say, there's a city that probably, but it's not, it's proportional to their population. Centralia has more than pretty much everybody else, but Centralia has the highest population too, so...
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And if you ever need, if you want... And if you ever need, if you want more, just let me know, if the numbers can always be numbered, so.
All right, well, let's proceed now with public comment.
Uh, yes, we have Larry Fickell.
Excellent, okay. Now, in case you are aware, you have three minutes, and we use this, and you have to take the podium and fit your name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Larry Fickell, and I did not receive correspondence back on the letter that I wrote to the council folks and you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm just here to observe and see if that is going to be brought up this evening.
Okay, yeah, we'll be talking point on item number three on our agenda.
All right, that's all I was gonna ask. Thank you.
All right, well, let's proceed then with our city business. Item number one, council to consider ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero one, the two thousand sixteen budget amendment. If I have a chance to remove your packet.
I move to approve ordinance two zero one seven dash zero one, adopting an amendment to annual budget for the calendar year of two thousand sixteen by increasing the street fund revenues and expenditures by twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, and directing the city clerk to effect the budget amendment herein provided as written.
Okay, we've heard the resolution, invented by Mr. Parsons, as read. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quer. Do we have any other council commentary at this time? Are there none? We'll put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, Mrs. Quer, thank you for your expeditious action. Okay, now we'll proceed with item two, council to consider resolution zero one dash twenty seventeen. Supposed to be in your packet.
I read this today, and my first thought was the connection charges of four thousand dollars. Is that a standard average? I've never hooked up a.
It is, it's actually rather small compared to most.
Wow, okay.
Because the city pays the cost of the connection, and it does generate revenue for the community. Most communities that are growing embrace the reality that there isn't really a lot of revenue generated within a city by building houses. It's not like a business where you get revenue from the state sales tax. So, it's generally used by communities to ensure that they can cover the cost of installation, and then at the same time, provide capital for infrastructure, replacement and such. And if you were to do a comparative analysis, correct me if I'm overstating this, if anybody's got specific facts, but, um, my research over the years is that if you compare our rates with the other communities, we're invariably considerably less than our neighbors.
I can vouch for that. When I first joined the council, I called around different cities and looked on different, larger cities, and did a comparison, and we're, we're right in the middle, so.
Okay. I've never seen that bill before.
I have, I have.
Yes, you have.
It just comes with the cost of doing business and building a home and such.
Yeah.
All right, well, so with that, we would await some action, some sort.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve resolution oh one dash two zero one seven, repealing two, resolution two two dash two zero one five, and any other resolution in direct conflict with resolution oh one dash two zero one seven, and setting fees and charges for sewer ordinance two zero one three dash zero three as written.
Okay, Mr. Chinas submitted a motion. Very great. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Quer. I heard that first. My good ear.
I'm on the deaf side, that's all right.
Do we have any observations coming to the council at this time? Are there none?
Actually.
Okay, go for it.
Quick question, when we, um, so it's, overage rate is based off sixty cents per hundred gallons over the forty-five hundred gallons per month. Is that something that maybe during the summer can be changed? Can we have a certain price for this, these months, and then a certain price? I'm thinking about myself, which other people do also, is gardening, because this is based off of water.
We already give a break in the summer for, for that. In the summertime, we don't charge you what your actual water usage is. We charge you what your winter water use rate, we take an average of the nine, what we consider the nine winter months. We average your last nine winter months, and in the summertime, we charge you whichever's lower, what, if you use, if your average is lower, or if your actual use during the summer months, whichever one's lower, we charge you that one. So that way, we figure we're charging you what your winter use is, which is what you use in your house. You're not watering your garden in the winter and all of that, yeah, so, so in the summertime, we charge at the winter average. So that, that, so if you normally use overage in the winter, you'll get that charged in the summer too, but only what you normally would use in the winter. If you don't normally, then you won't normally. If you happen to use less in the summer than you do in the winter, we'll charge you whichever is less.
Okay.
We go through, it takes a lot of time, and Diane spends a lot of time going through those and making sure that we charge the people at whichever is the lowest.
Is that anywhere, is that anywhere written?
Yeah, and that's written in the ordinance itself. This is just saying what each category of rate is set at. Um, and then the ordinance states how each category is calculated.
Okay, because that would be good for people to know, because I didn't know that, and.
I think most people do know that now.
Our city council is evil, so I want to look through that.
Most people do know that now, because we've, we've explained it to them.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's, it's always a good thing to remind them, to remind them. We could put that in one of our newsletters.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, although in complete candor, this is a public meeting. Um, we're all subject to the impact of summer water use, even if our winter use is down. I know if you have a garden, or if you have grandkids who want to play in the sprinklers, there's no way to pretend that our water rates, even though we live in one of the wettest parts in North America, are pretty high. And if there was some way to magically provide some assistance in that regard, I would certainly welcome. But ten years in this position, I haven't found a way to make it happen, given the fact that we get to treat water from a river. And some communities just dig a well, and they can use that well with water that's drinkable. The most expensive way to get water in a community, and to build a residence for it, is to take it out of a river and have to clean it.
And that's what we do.
Yeah, that's what we do, although some cities would give their right arm to have that access to river water. So we're in kind of a tricky situation. Like, my, uh, mother-in-law, I think I've used this before, lives in Resett, California. We visited them, and that's in the San Joaquin Valley, and it's underwater restrictions, but their monthly water rate was twelve dollars a month. And I'm thinking, how in heaven's name, living in this water-restricted area, and they had unlimited water use for, or they had twice as much water allocated and for use each month, so. It's just really unfortunate. And I can tell you, I, I think, I probably should have added on the mayor's, and then I forgot. I'll be meeting next week with county officials to talk about water and such, and I'll give a report to the council, how that goes. So anyway, I'm, I'm commiserating with you on that topic.
I was curious, is this rate increase due to our, our rumors that are upcoming, or?
Loan payback, upcoming loan payback.
We have gotten plenty of negative feedback from the residents of this community, and unfortunately, the mayor tends to end the city. It trickles from the employees at the window, but it hits the mayor, because we're a very visible entity in a community. Grips about the sewer rate increase. But the reality is, they, most of our residents know that we're going to need to embrace the reality of paying for a new waste treatment system. And when we raise the rates like that, what they don't seem to remember is what we're doing is slowly increasing them, so that we can qualify for, because if you don't have the rates at a certain level, they won't even grant you a grant for it. So we're slowly heating the water, so we can, if I use that as an analogy, so that they're accustomed to what the rate will likely be. If we were to persist in this process in another two or three years, and I'm not saying to do it, but we would have the rates where we wouldn't have to raise them, and we'd get the new system payments.
But without knowing if we're gonna get granted for the cost of it, yeah, how much?
It's a catch-22. The state won't exercise full grant funding options if you don't show that you raised your rates to a certain level. And so if you just held out until the last minute, well, they can show, they can show statistically through your rates that you're not very serious about preparing your residents. And so it's, Kathy Reed has given us all the guidance, correct me if I'm missing something here, but Jill has been through this a lot herself. They're with us, but Kathy Reed, Department of Commerce, who's, this is her career, says that cities that don't do that, they'll run into a brick wall, and, and I think that's what Toledo essentially did when they finished theirs, and the residents of rate increases went up by a hundred bucks per month, or whatever it was, and it was sticker chalk for them. So it's painful, but we're doing the right thing with this. And, and any revenue that's generated is going into our, the fund, that's, what are we up to in our waste treatment fund? We're about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
I think we're, at the end of two thousand seventeen, we'll be about two thirty-five.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not being wasted. I mean, it's going into this pot that will show that we have skin in the game when it comes time to apply for the grant funding. So, but the residents see a six dollar a month increase, and for them, on fixed income, and I'm on fixed income. I share their pain.
But it's five dollars just.
Well, whatever.
I'm just saying, I don't want anyone to think it's six. I know, I know.
Right.
And all of your, um, budget documents and the sewer projections and all showed this, showed this, and that was all part of it, so. All your letters that you approved is all based on this, so. At this point, this should just kind of be a pro forma.
Right.
Action, that you've already looked at it and discussed it, but, I mean.
Do we have the motion already?
Yes, we have the motion, we got the second, so I was just editorializing. But I have a feeling you've heard feedback too, too. No, I can share that with you. Okay, well, then with that, is there any inputs from council members who'd like to add for the public record before we vote? Okay, and there are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Mrs. Quer, you're thank you. Takes courage to the city council, now, in these votes. Okay, council discussion about code enforcement activities and actions. This topic was on the agenda, because we felt that it would be appropriate, as the council is the body that has approved the ordinances that are enabling us to strive to improve the quality of our community for all residents. And, and I can tell you that, how many actions would you say that we total, that we've got extended letters, and we've initiated the enforcement action on?
Um, I think about twelve or fourteen.
Okay, twelve or fourteen properties, and the property owners have been notified, and are in varying phases of responsivity. And, um, the commentary that I'd like to bring to the council's attention at this time is that each of those twelve or fourteen actions are at varying phases. And so it's not going to be possible to give you an overall concise case-by-case thing. And the reality is that it would be inappropriate, some of them. I have been in conversation with Jennifer Robertson, our attorney, who's assisting us in each of these cases. And she says that we are making progress, the city is to be commended for our efforts. Some of the landlords, I could tell as a matter of public record, are being more responsive than others. None of them are situations that we would voluntarily want to engage in, because you can imagine, some of the property owners are not pleased with the potential ramifications of our actions. Some are responsive, some are not, some are not responding. Now, I know that we have one of the property owners here, and I'm sure the council wouldn't mind hearing comments that you might have or questions. You don't need to even approach the stand, since this is agenda item.
Well, I just, you know, um, you sent me a letter that was registered. I didn't go to the mailbox on a decent time. First thing I know, Thanksgiving is approaching, now we're in the holidays, and so many things I can't control, like having a vehicle removed that's not licensed. I have to go through the county, so it's something I can't control. In order to get asbestos, I get a mobile removed, you have to go through certain steps with other districts that are not under my immediate control. So I wrote a letter asking, yes, thank you, for some relief, and in the bottom is where I really try to say, is that I want this cleaned up as much as you do. You know, I was not aware of the situation I was in, so I've been kind of trying to dig myself out of a hole, and still comply with what you want done. It just takes time, and it takes time to get bids, it takes time to get people removed, it takes time to get tenants to, you know, get their attention. Get, you know, six or eight cubic yard dumpsters delivered. All these things take time and I will do everything that you've asked. I'm just asking for a little bit of relief. I can't afford $2,000 a day, which is what it was at one point, that I was being charged. Those fees, I either pay the fees or I fix the issue and I think all of us want the issue to be solved. And I want to do everything I can to work with you. I don't want to be a thorn in your side. I don't want to litigate. I don't want to make it difficult on anybody. I'd like to see it cleaned up. Like I said, I wasn't, I don't live here. I live two and a half hours away. I would have been here earlier, the traffic was pretty bad. So I have a property manager that didn't advise me of what it was like. I rented a mic one day, he told me that it was bad. I had no idea. So I'm not here to make excuses. I'm just saying I'd like to work with you. I would appreciate some sort of relief to do this in the best interest of the community and me as a property owner. Okay? And I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them. I have nothing to hide, believe me.
I appreciate that. Mr. Fickell has been one of those property owners who's done his best to be, I would say done his best, to be responsive.
That's great.
And so I have no qualms and I know I'm not the one who's dealing with the paperwork. But I would tell you that Mrs. Robertson says that if we have individuals who are trying to be compliant with, we're not trying to extract monies from penalties. It's not the city's to do that either. But there have to be penalties in order, in case there are those who do not want to respond, which we have. So I would, speaking for our city clerk, give Mr. Fickell our assurances that we will do everything we can within the constraints of that thing and your responsiveness to help with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are we supportive of that?
Yes.
My, real quick, my question is, we, it wasn't December, it was a couple meetings ago?
December 15th was our last council meeting.
That we approved an extension? So I don't...
You approved part of, there were multiple issues and you approved some of the extensions. We just couldn't get them done. I, as I said, I was trying to dig myself out of a hole. And I wanted to try to be a good guy and say, yeah, I can do this. And then I realized, realized the reality of it. How you have to contract with people and it takes, I don't know, like a week or 10 days before you're gonna even show up to look at a vehicle that we don't own, the tenant doesn't own, then they have to sign off on it. And then they have to go through their processes of the county to get that vehicle removed. So things that are out of my control. And so yes, you did approve part of it. But then I received a letter from your attorney threatening me at $2,000 a day if I don't comply with the rest of them by the timelines. And...
I think there was a reason for that too. But I can tell you, our attorney cautioned me, knowing that this was going to be on the agenda. That this is, a public meeting is not the forum for council discussion on specific cases because of legal constraints about potential litigation. And that if we do want to engage in specifics, we have to call for an executive session. And if there's an executive session, the attorney needs to be either present or on the phone when we conduct such conversations. So we're walking the fine line here.
Yeah, I understand. And I appreciate the conversation and the honesty.
Yeah, thanks.
When Mr. Fickell's, the extension, it's called a voluntary correction agreement, which council approved, he signed, you know, you guys all signed, everybody signed. When the dates were not met, Mr. Fickell did ask for an extension on those dates. And because there is a section in that voluntary correction that allows for that. And then the, it was turned down because it didn't meet the requirements of the additional time extension. But the city attorney did respond to him and let him know that we're not interested in your money. We're interested in getting, getting it cleaned up. So what you need to do at this point is get it cleaned up as fast as you can. And there's still some dates that February, the end of February, you have to get the house out of there. So you still have time on that one. That one hasn't been, hasn't met its time limit yet. But what she, what she suggested in the letter, and you guys have a copy of the letter there if you want to look for it. It says, come back and talk to us again after you get it all done and then we can talk about all these fines. Yes, technically, according to the ordinance, you're getting all these fines at every item at $500 a day. At every day that that's out of compliance. That's what the ordinance is set at. And so technically, yes, but there's also provision to allow for giving people a break for certain circumstances like things that are beyond their control. And so she said, that's what you need to do. You need to get, get all the stuff done and get back to us as fast as you can. As you get things completed, let us know so we can come and note what day it is and take pictures and have all of that information together. And then when you're all done, then come back to us and say, okay, this is what I've done. You know, I've gotten everything cleaned up. What can we do about these fines? And so then we can work on it with the attorney at that point as far as cutting, cutting those back. And there's a very good chance of doing that. The sooner you can get the stuff done, the better it is for you to do that. And so that's what she explained to me in any event. So that's kind of where we're at right now, is we're, we're waiting. We're waiting to hear when things are getting done so that we can track that.
So, question with, not necessarily your situation, but it came up, is a vehicle that doesn't belong to a renter. It doesn't belong to the homeowner. So I direct my question at you, deputy, is, somewhere, actually, my son-in-law was like, just call the sheriff. If it's on your property, you can say, tow it off. And the others, the city that he works in, they call the tow truck and it's towed off at the owner's expense. Is that not the case for either the city of Vader or Lewis County?
Well, what the county has is two different deals. Like if somebody just, if somebody just pulled into your yard and dropped the vehicle off and it just happened, then yes, you can just have, you as a property owner can just call the tow truck and have it towed off and it's gonna, the deal's gonna go to whoever is last registered owner of the vehicle. But when you have vehicles that are stripped or in some way dismantled and sitting on property for a long time, they're termed as hulk vehicles now. So as a hulk vehicle, now you have to have, the county has to come out and inspect that vehicle and make sure that it's all clear and free and research to find out who it did belong to and that type of deal. And then they clear it off and then now you can have it removed off of the property. But once a vehicle's been left at a piece of property and stripped or tried to re-stripped or something, that's termed as a hulk vehicle.
Do you know what the timeframe is approximately to do that?
Usually they, usually if you call up there, they got a guy that's roaming around all the time. It just depends on how busy he is, so. They don't really know that. But yes, it's through our, the county has a guy that roams around and inspects all the hulk vehicles that are listed on whatever.
Okay. Well, I hope that's given you a sense that we're willing to help and we're not out to deter my...
I appreciate that. And the only other thing that I'd ask for in my letter was that blackberries were gonna be done before. And I asked if when we get a skip litter in and we do the mobile, can we do the blackberries at that time? Because that's a separate issue. I mean, that's just one of the issues that you have. And my, I was just thinking, that's the easier way to do it. It's all gonna happen. But then I get to the root cell and said it just leveled.
I really believe that inasmuch as City Hall is responsive to your concerns and we're working closely with you on this, that would be something we can see if we can work out at a time.
I appreciate that.
Is that...
Thanks.
Subtle of responses possible. So keep in touch with Jill and she will run everything by myself and the city attorney.
When, are we still in the discussion about this code enforcement? When are the next set of letters going out?
I don't have a date set yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I can tell you that it's a challenge for our staff, given the performance expectations on a number of areas. We've bitten off a lot so far and each case has its own specifics. And so right now, my recommendation would be is we focus on the ones we've got and handle them as well as we can. And then as we eliminate cases, we add onto them.
And just for the record, I am very pleased, as I drive around town, I see things that are cleaning up and getting boarded up and fenced off and so on and so forth because of these letters. And I'm happy to see it happening because that's what we want.
You too. It takes courage to do this and determination on the city's part. And at Jennifer Robertson's legal counsel, she says that we should hold an executive session so that the council, with her input and feedback and hear what lies ahead for the council and the city staff with regard to properties where the owners are not being as compliant and cooperative as Mr. Fickell. And so I would recommend that we engage in an executive session at our next city council meeting. Because council should hear what Jennifer Robertson has to say. I could brief you one by one, if you so chose, but that'd be time consuming. So I would conclude this agenda item with that. And I don't say it with any error before voting. So just, I think the next appropriate step. Okay. And is there any other council commentary on that? There's no action tweeted. Let me conclude by thanking you for coming all this way.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Well, then let's proceed with item number four. It's a pro forma item, council to consider release of retained funds to North Fork Asphalt Paving Company for the Inchip Seal project statement.
I move to release retained funds to North Fork, North Fork Asphalt Paving Incorporated in the amount of $1,347.50 for contract work relating to the 2016 10th Street paving project and direct the city clerk to issue payment in the stated amount.
Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Parsons. And it's read. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Seconded, okay, by Mr. Daly. Do you have any additional council commentary? All right. Let's put a two vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion's carried. Right, we added, from your absence. We have a fifth, we passed a motion to conduct a council discussion relating to a crushed surface water drain pipe that runs down the hill from Andy Wilson's house to the railroad tracks. And it's been a problem we've been aware of for a number of years. I know Mr. Daly's dealt with it a lot. And so the council approved the addition of that as a talking point on our agenda. So would you like to?
Well, one thing we talked about in the past is scoping that, where it flows into the Olafwa. And I think that's really the easiest way to get, to go from. Because what I'm talking about is the space between the railroad tracks and the bridge.
I was confused. I was thinking of the downward slope where we did scope it and we know where it's collapsed. Okay, so you're suggesting on the other side of railroad tracks from your restaurant to the bridge?
Ever since they put that PUD line through, it's been surface water problem from the get-go.
Is there no water flowing out of that pipe? Have you looked at it here in the rain?
Even in the rain, it's always the same flow, even when it's not raining. And after it rains for, continually for, you know, I'd say an hour, hour and a half, it seems like it, it backflows and then it starts coming out of everywhere. Like underneath the railroad bed, over at the crossing, all over the place.
So this happened after PUD?
Yeah, after...
So have we talked to the PUD?
Well, Brandon Milton had help digging out the sides so that they could put the boring machine in. And at, sometime during it, this time is when, is when problems started happening for, well, actually it was, it was the, that happened during the summer, so it was, it was after that when it started raining again that we started having lots of problems.
Now, the pipe that you're referring to on the south side of the bridge, wouldn't that be on Brandon Milton's property? Or does it run right along the easement?
It runs along the easement there.
It's the south...
It's on the, it's on the south side of the highway?
South side of 506? So it's not by Andy's house? So it's not by you guys?
No, I confused you. There's two different depressed pipes.
It's between the railroad tracks and the bridge on Milton's side.
So like across the street from your...
And somehow it ties in. It ties in right there at the crossing, probably. Oh, I don't know, because we've never scoped it or, well, the upper part, you said, been scoped by Andy's place.
Well...
Now, John that lives across the creek there says that when it would rain, the water would shoot out that pipe that hit the middle of the creek. And now it's the same all the time.
Something's clearly different.
Maybe they piped it into the sewer system. That's where our issue is.
Definitely a cracking sewer on that side, it's over Brandon Milton's. They'd have to pipe it all the way over to Brandon's line and then back up again.
Well, a nice try. But, well, I know I watched as they punched the line. The city paid $5,000 to get that line punched under, so that you'd get our...
It was closer to $100,000.
No, that's for the sewer line underneath. But when we had to connect the water line, we punched the line to put the water line over onto his property. And that, I think, is your contention. And it was the Castello's Apple Electric that oversaw that.
No, I, I remember, that's on the west side of the property, that, of his driveway. The PUD came from the pole on this side of the property by the storage units and burrowed under to the west side of his, that Atlas Road, it's right there.
Got you. Okay, I'm just...
Kelly, I talked to Kelly. He never even, he'd never seen a culvert down in that area where he was at.
Okay, I've just, I've mixed projects and confused the...
So they bore under to put power?
Power.
Oh, okay. Do you know approximately when that was? What year?
No. It's, it's three years ago, probably.
Okay.
This last, end of last summer, in three years. This is, well, this is the third year, I guess, I'm dealing with it, so.
Okay.
It's starting to cause like structural problems from the water running around the building. And I believe from running under the building, I got cracked windows.
What does PUD have to say about it? Anything? Have they been responsive at all?
I haven't contacted the PUD. The actual, well, since it was... well, I haven't contacted the PUD.
I would, I think that would do. They ought to engage in, if you can convince them that that's the cause of your water damage. The railroad, obviously, we discussed that as a possible cause of the water situation. And if I'm not mistaken, they denied.
Right, yeah, I, I think we were kind of grasping at straws, kind of blaming them and hopefully maybe seeing if they'd figure it out for us, but it didn't happen.
Could you not put a French drain about, around your restaurant? You have to catch the water and divert it somewhere.
So we just need to, so there's a main storm drain that's going down, right? So I'm trying to get this pictured, on both sides of the road?
Actually, I believe what, what it does is it, it leaves from Andy's side of the highway right there at Moon Street and crosses under the highway to the other side of, to the south side of five oh six and runs along that side and is out.
Okay.
So if PUD.
See, there's no map, there's no map or anything, we don't have any plans between.
Well, but it sounds to me like, if that's the case, then PUD running a line across at Brandon's place, the pipe is already on the other side by then, so why would that have affected?
Well, because they put this boring machine through, right? And I'm thinking that it, they didn't know that that pipe was there, and the boring machine went through and, and just filled it up and went through it.
Oh, so that it backs up now is what you're saying, and when it backs up somewhere, it's overflowed.
Yeah, it gets to that flat part in the railroad tracks and it just, it puddles out and just puddles everywhere.
Gotcha, okay, now I've got a picture of what you're talking about.
A little slow, but can you make a map, show us where you think these things are at? And certainly, I would be an advocate with you to approach PUD and to try and resolve it. And I also think that we ought to look into fixing the collapsed portion of the surface water pipe on the north side of five oh six, which we know exists.
Up the hill.
Yeah, it's up the hill, but we know where it's at, and so.
If we fix that, then it's just gonna make more water go down.
Yeah, but there's pipes that it could go into.
Well, then you can see what if it's compressed past that too, is where it's going.
They might want to do it at the same time, so I don't know, making it worse.
How deep is that pipe?
I don't know, but it's not terribly deep. Didn't have to be, it's surface water.
Wasn't it an old sewer line?
Probably, yeah.
I'm telling you, that's, that's where it's, it's an old sewer line, it's probably connected somewhere, that's why our numbers are going up.
Are the storm, the storm system in town, is that considered our sewer budget expense? That's from streets?
It doesn't have a budget right now.
I see.
So I think it's a current fund budget, which the streets is also actually a sub-fund of the current fund, so yes, it would be a current.
Does that be REIT, REIT fund?
I, no, because that's capital improvement.
Okay.
I, I don't know, I don't know, it doesn't hurt to look at REIT, you just never know.
Just wondering.
Yeah.
Mayor, if you want to come down sometime, and I'll, I'll just walk you through it.
You've done it before, but if you have a little map too, I'd be grateful for that.
Okay.
And let's talk. It occurred to me, we've got these O nine funds.
Can I go with you guys on that, or would that be too many of us at one point?
Come down at eight in the morning.
Just don't get a third.
Okay.
Do we head count it?
The guys can walk and they can talk. No, because he's not a council member, he's the mayor, can't have three council members together.
You get to vote on it.
If you do, no one is allowed to talk. You just have to sign and say, well, do you know?
Okay, um, well, to complete this conversation, there are O nine funds that are out there, we've talked about it before, that county commissioners and mayors are involved with, there's an appointed one. And we can show that there was an infrastructure problem that was impacting our business, commercial enterprise of some sort. We could seek for funding approval, I think, if it met the criteria. I can't guarantee that this would, but I do think it might be something to think about. But I think the first approach, if we can show that the PUD is a prime suspect in this, then I would entertain that as a first contact. So, all right, we're not on that, but.
On that note, um, oh, shoot, I forgot his name, who's the PUD guy?
Over, over, over.
Oh, yes, he's been very helpful in a lot of things, so.
He has.
He's very down-to-earth and great guy.
So we do have a good source there. All right, well, then with that, thank you for bringing that up. Unless, I don't think there's anything else on our agenda, I will declare this council meeting adjourned at seven seventeen E P M.